Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during this meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance where Ms. Bobby Forbes is right now. If you do that, please present it to the City Clerk and speakers will be called upon by me at the appropriate time. This time, I will convene the City Council and City Council as a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency for July 21st, 2017, City of Grand Terrace. And I'm going to ask, sir, that you just walked in, would you happen to be Miguel Mendez?
No.
All right. My apologies. Welcome, though. I'm glad that you are here. Councilmember Wilson will be giving our invocation tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Assistant City Attorney Baron Benninghausen. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to gather together a group of thy children to conduct the business of many. We ask, Father, that we might be blessed, that we might have a small measure of thy knowledge and thy guidance, that we might do things in accordance with thy will and in accordance with what is right and fair, that we might remember our station, that as we look over the business of the city, that we might be touched. Father, we thank thee that we have this wonderful surrounding to meet in. We ask a blessing upon all those who are in the military, that they might be protected and that they may come home to us. We ask those who are ill or afflicted that they might be blessed also. Father, we thank thee and ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember and Assistant City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, may we roll call, please.
Councilmember Reinars.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor Mcnevo.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items? No. Okay, before there's a motion, I would like to point out the approval of minutes for regular meeting for 2517. There is an amendment to somebody's name, and it's Father Andrew Lesko, L-E-S-K-O, and we spell it with an M instead. But if I may, Mr. City Attorney, make that correction and then ask if there's a motion to approve the consent calendar with that amendment?
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Wilson, Hussey, Reinars voting yes, Mayor Protem voting yes, and Mayor Mcnevo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. We also may ask for a brief response from staff to questions raised and may request that a matter be agendized at a future meeting. Are there any requests to speak during this time? Thank you. The first I have on my list is Karen Suarez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council. My name is Karen Suarez, and I'm here with the Foundation of Grand Terrace. I wanted to share a little bit and also give you a couple of updates. The Foundation of Grand Terrace is a nonprofit voluntary and dynamic organization of community members that's dedicated to enriching the quality of life in Grand Terrace. We have some incredible committees composed of community events, the Grand Terrace Dog Park, our Veterans' Wall of Freedom, Keep Grand Terrace Clean and Beautiful, Healthy Grand Terrace, and our Grand Terrace Youth Services. Our objectives are to provide flexible, fiscally prudent means for donors to wisely invest in our community, and we focus on cultural enhancement, community beautification, economic development, education, land conservancy, senior services, and youth development. I want to thank my fellow board members, Tom Rice, Cindy Grande, Connie Parsons, Sally Holt, Beverly and Michael Ald, Sally Maguire, James Timoney, Darcy Mcnevo, Penny Radke, Eldrick Keough, Jane Haynes, and Don Larkin for working together for the efforts of the Foundation. I'm here today to thank you and the city staff for all of your support for Community Day last month. This is a volunteer-led event, and without your support, it wouldn't have been possible. Sally Maguire and I chaired it with the support of James Timoney and Master Robert Ewing. We absolutely appreciate the city's presence and all that you do in supporting events that the Foundation puts on. As you know, next year is our city's 40th anniversary, and I'm here today to let our community know that we would really love and need your volunteer support and ask you to consider joining us by serving on the Community Day Planning Committee so that we can begin planning for next year. As always, Community Day is not possible without all the wonderful volunteers that work with us to plan, coordinate, and execute. The Kids Zone, our vendor, our setup, our cleanup, the performances, and programming. We just absolutely appreciate you and all that you've done to help us in this wonderful event for our great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. Our next speaker is Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Just wanted to follow up on the conversations we've been having regarding the budget and also looking at what we're doing for the efforts to increase law enforcement in the city. Want to make sure it stays on the agenda and we continue to follow. I know that Mr. Duffy is working on holding a meeting and a workshop that we requested, and I'd like to see when we can have an update on what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. Bobby Forbes, 11850 Burns Avenue, Grand Terrace. I'd like to say thank you for the street painting that's going on in town. The streets are looking so nice in the neighborhoods that have been completed, and I'm sure the rest will follow. We know that. Signs. I stopped at an open house this weekend at the corner of Pico in Michigan, no, excuse me, Pico and Wilmac to find out that the realtor hadn't been hit yet by code enforcement, but she did go and shut down that open house because that agent and broker didn't have a permit to have an open house in Grand Terrace. So I checked into, today I made a request of City Hall to give me the rules for the signage because I didn't really know that you had to have a permit to do open houses also or to have the signs went separately from the permit to do business in Grand Terrace or the business license. So I now know that you do. I used to, was a nice person, and would go to the open houses and say, hey, you have to have a license here in town. I'm not doing that anymore because nobody appreciated it. So I'm just letting them get hit by the code enforcement. But it seems that it's awfully strict, and, you know, we're not living in an HUD. We don't live in a HUD development. We live in a city of Grand Terrace that by doing open houses, I've probably done more open houses in this town than anybody else in my 30 years of being here. And many of you come to my open houses. It's a good way to meet people, to find out what's going on in town, but it does sell homes and it brings people into town. They shop here, they stop at the liquor store, they stop at the McDonald's, they stop in town and spend money and get to know the community by coming to the open houses. If you make it so that real estate agents can't do their open houses without all these rules, with the rules, they're eventually going to stop, except for mine, I guess, but they're going to back down, and that's going to be hard on your sellers. It will affect the prices of the houses in Grand Terrace that are selling, and I think that there needs to be some reconsideration of how it's being presented. Let the Board of Realtors know. Do something to let the agents and the brokerages know that, hey, in Grand Terrace, you have to do this. Maybe it should be that agent's responsibility to find out, but I don't think so. I think there has to be a communication with at least the Board of Realtors that are working in our area, which comes to yard sale signs. And I know this weekend there was an issue with someone that got a permit. They did what they thought they were told regarding signage, and code enforcement came out, made them take the signs down. So therefore, they had no clients or no customers come to their open house. It was a failure. Not everybody can afford to donate all of the things that they no longer need to the Goodwill or to some thrift shop somewhere. Some people need that $500 that they might make from that. They might need that $3,000 that they get from the estate sale of their mother passing. Again, we don't live in a HUD. Let's make it so these people can do these yard sales that also bring people into town to spend money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment that you'd like to make on that?
Sure, yes. For the record, D. R. Duffy, the City Manager, the city went through probably a two-year process for the sign ordinance, and I think that although we thought we landed upon the most palatable solution, staff is certainly open to you bringing any information to our attention. For example, if there's, if you think that the application isn't clear and that we need to add more language, we can certainly do that. We can certainly look at that. But, you know, we did have the Realtors weigh in when the city did the initial sign ordinance, and we went from a very limited amount of signs to 25 signs for Realtors. So, you know, the sign ordinance was, as I said earlier, about a two-year process in which the council took testimony and so on and so on. So we are certainly available to have anyone come in and talk to us about the sign ordinance. I did talk with staff. We are looking at clearly identifying, so customers who come in for a yard sale permit or a Realtor that comes in, it's clearly understood what they can and cannot do versus signs. And so we're available to help in any way we can.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time?
Can I correct myself on something? I said we don't live in a HUD, we don't live in HOA.
I appreciate the clarification about not living in a HUD but not living in HOA. Clearly, they are very different things, and we don't live in either of them. I appreciate that, Ms. Forbes. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? Okay. Seeing no takers, I will close public comment and come back to my colleagues for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Brian Reinars.
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I also have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Your Honor, thank you. I appreciate it, and also I'd like to thank everyone that's made the motion to make it here today. This is what government's all about, and I have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you so much. Mayor Protem, Sylvia Robles.
Just one item. I attended the July Board Meeting of Omnitrans, and the principal outcome of that meeting was they did a customer satisfaction survey for all forms of transportation. The principal area is the SBX line. There's gradients of satisfaction depending where the line is, and we asked staff to go back and to get better information on how businesses are currently being adversely affected by some parts of that line. And also, there was a discussion about getting more information to our member communities and we reminded them that they have talked to us about creating contact that we could have on Channel 3 to get more information out. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to start off by recognizing the passing of a longtime resident. People knew him as Frank Faray. His name was actually John Franklin Faray. He was 85, and he passed away on July 2nd. He graduated from San Bernardino High School, went to San Bernardino Valley College. He served in the Army, and he graduated from the University of Redlands. He spent a 40-year career as a CPA. He served on the Colton Planning Commission, the Colton School Board, the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce, the Riverside Highland Water Company, the Valley College Foundation, and he was a member of, well, this says Colton Kiwanah, but he was also, I knew him as a member of the Grand Terrace Lions. He was very active in Colton, Redlands, and Riverside Methodist churches, and he was married to our former mayor, Marietta Faray. So he is survived by son Jeff, daughter Julie, and his wife, Marietta. He had a number of grandchildren, and I would like to close in his honor tonight, which makes my report from Sandbags seem, I don't know, kind of inconsequential. But SBCTA Board Meeting on July 12th, the General Policy Committee and Metro Valley Study Session were dark in July. We had a lot of items to consider this time around. We started with a closed session, which was a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, and then many of our consent calendar items were end-of-year reports, looking at such things as Measure I local pass-through compliance, the demographics in which they distribute Measure I funds. We received a report on that. We looked at a reimbursement agreement with Omnitrans for their operation and maintenance of the San Bernardino Transit Center. We authorized the executive director to execute a contract with Omnitrans memorializing the recipient, sub-recipient roles and responsibilities for federal fund sources administered by the Federal Trade Administration, and that is for the implementation of the Redlands Rail. So SBCTA is a council of governments and is a transportation authority. They also work with other agencies such as Omnitrans when it comes to funding that can be received through the region, and if it's something that SBCTA can't take themselves through the funding mechanism, they work with other agencies such as Omnitrans. We approved planned specifications and estimates for the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. We also authorized modification of scope for the Redlands Passenger Rail Project to incorporate improvements to the Mission Zankie Channel in Redlands. We approved a contract with the California Energy Commission for the development of the San Bernardino Countywide Zero Emission Vehicle Readiness and Implementation Plan. So hopefully, what that means for our residents is that there's an opportunity for us to have charging stations perhaps, once again, in the city, and we'll have to see what the plan brings, but a lot of times when they have the planning for the countywide, there are opportunities for funding for those types of resources. So we did adopt the population estimates for the allocation of Measure I Local Street Program funds. We looked at some projects up in the desert and allocated funds for that. Our discussion items were to appoint an independent taxpayer oversight committee member. Wayne Hendricks is his name. We had hearings to consider resolutions of necessity for parcels along the US 395. That's an area in Adelanto where they are looking to expand that portion of 395. We awarded a construction contract to Monte Vista, or, excuse me, to Police Construction Inc. for the Monte Vista Avenue grade separation. And then the I Corridor project was a major project discussion. We heard a couple of hours of testimony, once in closed session and once in open session. In the open session, we heard probably an hour's worth of testimony of people that were not too happy with the express lane project, and we heard quite a bit actually in favor of it. So at the time we listened, we considered going forward. What we were actually looking at, though, was the final environmental impact report and impact statement that was approved by Caltrans. And so Caltrans was the agency to look at that environmental study and to approve it, and all we were doing as a body at SBCTA was accepting Caltrans's approval of it, and we moved forward with adopting the findings and facts in support of this document. We approved a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for right-of-way and design-build phase activities for this particular project, and we authorized staff to proceed with voluntary acquisition of property. This is going to end up being express lanes that will come through the I-10. It starts at the border of the county with Los Angeles, and will go out to Ford Street and Redlands at a particular time. This is actually for the first phase, and it's about 10 miles. So it starts at the county line and goes to just before the 15 freeway. We awarded a contract to Tripspark Technologies for licensing of their software for the SBCTA Vanpool Program, and there are opportunities for residents who need to get to work in other parts of this region to Vanpool, even if your company doesn't offer it. The county has a Vanpool program that you could look into. And then we authorized the placement of assessments on the tax roll in agreement with the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector for the collection of special taxes, fees, and assessments as required by the HERO program. SBCTA did not take action to extend the HERO program, but there are many homeowners that have taken advantage of this, and so part of their financing comes through the ability to place on the tax roll, on their tax bill, the investment they are making in their home. And so this will be an annual occurrence that SBCTA needs to give that authorization. We also approved a purchase-sale agreement with Samus Capital to allow, Samus Capital to advance funds to cover commercial pace assessment delinquencies. In other words, businesses that are delinquent on their HERO program-type improvements, SBCTA is not going to be foreclosing on them. There's a company that will be extending loans to help them cover it. And so I'm going to make that the last that I say about that and move on to the rest of our agenda for tonight. We don't have any public hearings, and we don't have any unfinished business, so we will move on to new business. We start with item number nine on our agenda, which is Parks and Recreation Committee.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Before we start that, if I could just have one minute, I promise I won't have any City Manager comments at the end of the meeting.
Mr. Duffy, would you like to have your City Comments move to this point in the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just wanted, Mayor of the Council, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to Steve Livingston. And Steve is our new Weekend Code Enforcement Officer. He'll be working on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So he started maybe two weeks ago, and he started off on Thursday, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday for the last couple of weeks. So wanted just to give you guys a chance to see his face, and he's a new addition to our staff.
All right. Well, thank you. Welcome. And that must have been a little challenging that I was going to make you responsible for an invocation on your first night visiting us. Thank you for being here tonight, and welcome to the city. All right. So item nine, Parks and Recreation Committee. May we have a staff report? Alright, so item nine, Parks and Recreation Committee. May we have a staff report, Mr. Duffy?
So this item is, is looking for direction for a council for Parks and Recreation Committee? So the PowerPoint, the quick pictures there were just an opportunity for the public in the council, just to remind the council of all the different activities that we have in the area of Park and Recreation in the City of Grand Terrace. Okay, great. The history. In 1980, the city established a Parks Committee. And the Parks Recreation Committee responsibilities at the time were, the park duties were the committee oversaw the development of new parks. And some of the recreation duties included responsibility for community events such as Grand Terrace Day, the Tour Day Terrace Bike Classic, Grand Terrace Summer Camp, volunteer programs, youth programs. There was many different types of programs. And sort of recreation, the committee became inactive due to budget constraints. So as the Park and Recreation Department was eliminated back in 2000. So what are some of the benefits of a Park and Recreation Committee? So it can establish a protocol for citizens for interaction. For example, if citizens want new parks, they have an opportunity to go before the Parks Commission. If they have different events they want to talk about, they can go before the Parks Commission. It takes a place and allows ideas to be vetted in more detail versus a two or three-minute conversation at the city council meeting. They review strategies before policymakers have to, before it gets to the policymakers. So Park and Recreation Staffing. So this proposal, we have no new staffing will be added. The recreation component will occur via contracts with volunteers. So back when the city had a Park and Recreation Department, they actually had up to eight staff at one time in that department administering a lot of recreation programs. So park recreation functions at the park level would be, the committee will review park assessment report. About two years ago, the city council hired MIG to do a park assessment, a view of all of our existing parks and what the potential possibility for improvements were at those parks. I included the park assessment report in this packet. And also the Veterans Freedom Park upgrades. We talked about, once we added the Freedom Wall and renamed the park Veterans Freedom Park from Pico Park, that we wanted to add some additional enhancements to the park to kind of go along with that certain theme. So this would be one of the things that the potentially new Park and Recreation Commission would be looking at. The Blue Mountain Trailhead would also be an activity that they would be looking at as the city embraced and pulls forward that project. The Skate Park would be another one. And so one of the things that we need to look at, we talk about the Skate Park, the Blue Mountain Park, and even the Dog Park. Those were actually citizen-initiated programs first. And then I came before the council and the council kind of identified them as, yes, we'll move forward with these. So you had a citizens group or multiple groups who were interested in park and recreation programs. So they came forward and they actually on their own moved forward with the projects. And then when the city got involved, then the city kind of assumed the responsibility. Having a Park and Recreation Committee will allow the citizens to have an organization or a body within the city that can go and share and vet their ideas and their concepts. So they would also, like I said, recommend new parks or the rehabilitation of parks. So under recreation component, so they may provide input on vendors that are going to be doing recreational services. And so a good example of that would be, in 2016, the city had a summer swim program and we hired the Boys and Girls Club and they operated the program for us for six weeks. We also had a summer camp that was operated by the Rec Center. Both of those groups were under contract with the city. And through our relationship with the school district, we were able to use school facilities, the school pool. And so I would envision that as we move forward with doing park and recreations, one of the things we would continue to do is utilize those partnerships in that area. So an alternative to that, to a Park and Recreation Committee, if the council didn't want to have that, move forward with that activity, the council could have an ad hoc committee that would consist of two council members that would be appointed every year and it would rotate from year to year. It would still provide the avenue of allowing the residents to go to a place to have a detailed conversation, but it would be limited in terms of you'd have less people advocating for parks in terms of, you'd have a five-member Parks Commission. So that's just another option if the council didn't want to move forward with a Park and Recreation Commission. So with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Are there questions of staff at this time? Mayor Protem?
I just want to do a clarification. The staff report says that I stated during several council meetings that I would like to see the Parks and Recreation Committee reestablished. That's true, but actually what this happened was, we said two council members or more, or if we have a consensus of the council, then we can proceed on something. So what ultimately I did was I said, do I have council consensus to have staff bring back a way to proceed on having a Parks and Recs Commission? And there was nothing about an ad hoc committee. So it just seems that we're, you know, somehow we need to figure out, we're elected legislators, yet we're trying to put things on the agenda and it seems like we never seem to get a clear path to that. And then if we do get something put on the agenda, then it comes back with a multiple choice, you know, kind of thing. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Any questions of staff at this time? Alright, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Please state your name for the record.
I turned in a slip.
Mr. McConnell?
Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. I find this very interesting and I've been proactive in my seventeen years here in town from time to time, whether it's on an ad hoc committee or going to workshops regarding parks and youth organizations. I recall going to a council workshop about ten years ago and the only people in the audience was myself and Sylvia Robles and we were pushing a skate park back then. And as you know, I've also was very active in promoting and naming and collecting many signatures for the Grand Terrace Fitness Park over in my neck of the woods. So and I have supported Mr. Dennis Kidd in his endeavors to create a Blue Mountain Park, being an old boy scout. And I volunteer at all the hikes. I used to hike all over the Sierras until I blew out my knee, but I still believe in and support it. So I would be more than happy to help participate in this Parks Commission, Committee. And because I find that this is one of the founding, foundation stones of our committees, not just the volunteers, but the youth sports organizations. Been in Lions Club for about thirteen years. This has been talked about from time to time and more recently, I think Lions Club members are now currently looking for other things to do and this would, I'm sure they would participate in some way. All the years I've come to the council meetings, I've seen the many sports, youth organizations come in here and support and offer to protect their fields and their organizations. So I think it's, when I was editor of the Blue Mountain Outlook for like six years, I've always took lots of pictures of the kids playing and trying to promote youth sports and calling, referring to Grand Terrace as the Soccer Mom USA. And a lot of the parents would come up to me and make positive comments all the time. So I think this is very important to our community in many ways. And like I said, I'd be more than happy to offer my time on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. I'm sorry that we didn't have your slip up here. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, so you know, takers, I'll bring it back to council for their direction to staff at this time. Mayor Protem?
As far as the form of it, I think, you know, we have just five commissioners and we each get to point one. And my thinking on this is again, when you, in most cities when you have elections, elections, one of the consequences is that the person that's been elected can make new appointments to the Planning Commission or whatever commissions that there are. And it gives a way to, you know, for the voter to also say, well, if we don't like the way you're going, or we like your vision, they vote for somebody or they take someone out of office. And that's a way of having a check on government. Also, it's been, I served on the Parks and Rec Commission and it was a very vibrant organization. I think that we have a history as a city council, whenever there's an economic downturn, we punish parks and recreation. And I think this goes back to making right on that. We don't have, other than contract recreation, but that's fine. This allows citizens to come in that have a vision or an expertise in an area to come and have a forum where they have more than three minutes to talk. And there's an ability to get this done. And this way, it's just a more organized fashion in my opinion. And that's all I have to say for now.
Alright, thank you Mayor Protem. Any other comments at this time? Councilmember Reinars?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, I agree with Mayor Protem and I also agree with Mr. Duffy and would recommend that we move forward on this in some fashion because I do believe that sports and recreation in parks are very important to the City of Grand Terrace. And this would add an added layer of support for all of the volunteers who are out there now. So I would recommend that we move forward.
In what manner would you recommend that we move forward?
I like the idea of the appointments as stated by the Mayor Protem. I like that idea.
Councilmember Hesse, did you have comments?
I agree with the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Reinars. You know, the appointment for Parks and Recreation Committee and, you know, like the Mayor Protem said, you know, we do cut Parks and Recs, but most of it is volunteer. And the city, you know, that's our responsibility. You know, I know we've been looking at public safety and everything too on that. And one of the key establishments is to make sure our youth have something to do. We have, you know, there's programs for them, try to, you know, cut off at the pass if something's gonna go wrong. But that's one good thing about the city, you know, we're a strong program on that when we did the youth programs. And it was nice when we have, we're bringing back the swimming thing and we had Recreation do the little camp last year. And a lot of the families look forward to that. But I agree with the Mayor Protem and we should move forward to that on the committee.
Okay, so so far I've heard committee appointments, are we talking an ad hoc committee or are we talking about committee appointments for community volunteers and that they would make up the committee themselves?
Yeah, we're talking about a Parks and Rec Commission with five appointed members by the city council, each having one.
Okay, so sort of like the historical and cultural committee?
Well...
In that fashion?
I don't know because I don't know what fashion it is. What I'm saying for the Parks and Rec, it would be five members, each member appointed by one council member.
Councilmember Wilson, what are your comments?
I believe what you're asking is whether it should be an advisory or a, advisory or policymaking. I think advisory is probably our best bet. Let's go ahead and move into this cautiously.
Okay.
The council's responsible for policymaking.
Okay, so what I'm understanding my colleagues to say is that they would like to move forward with Park and Recreation Committee, that it would be committee appointments by council members and it would be advisory. So you'll come back to us with?
Yes, so what you have today is you can approve the resolution.
Okay.
Instead of having seven members, it'll be five.
Okay.
And then I will return to the council at a future date with item number, responsibilities. The Park and Recreation Committee will be guided by the general policy guidelines as approved by the city council and will have the following duties. So I'll come back with those guidelines for the council to approve. But you would approve the resolution today, the formation of the committee and the five members, one member appointed by each member of the council.
Okay. Is there a council member that would like to make that motion?
I'll move adoption of Resolution 2017XX, a resolution of the city council of the City of Grand Terrace establishing a Parks and Recreation Committee. And that would be, we don't have a number here, do we? Oh, the Exhibit A?
Yes.
Strike out seven members and make it five members. And strike out two other members shall be appointed by majority vote of the city council.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Wilson, Hesse, Reinars voting yes, Mayor Protem, Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Alright, thank you. We'll move to item 10, which is Approval of Information System Support Agreement Renewal with the City of Loma Linda.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, Cynthia Fortun, Assistant City Manager. Before you, tonight, is an agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the City of Loma Linda for information system support, for an information system support agreement. Unfortunately, we're having a little technical difficulty, so I'm going to ask you if you can just refer to your slide. This staff report supports Goal Number Four, developing and implementing successful partnerships by working collaboratively with other public sector agencies to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting our community. So the city council is aware, several years ago, both cities entered to an agreement where the City of Loma Linda would provide us with system support services. And those services included hardware and software installation, maintenance and troubleshooting of all existing PC systems, printers, phones, internet, Wi-Fi, administering and coordinating user access and control of all the city's databases, preventive maintenance for the city's network communication systems, servers, internet and telephone system. Prior to them helping us, the city actually didn't have a backup server. What did that mean? If our database failed, a lot of our database systems would not work. What they've done is establish their site as our backup. So they've actually, we've purchased several servers and now they maintain that. So we do have our main server in our IT storage unit here and they have a backup on their site. They've also pushed us to, they gave, we got a new city domain. We went from City of Grand Terrace, CA.us to City of Grand Terrace, CA.gov. And they've upgraded a lot of our PCs. They've provided us Wi-Fi, free of charge. They have added us to our license prior to them coming. Each individual PC user, we need to maintain a license both for Windows and Microsoft Office. What Loma Linda did was just add us, because we're not that many, add us to their existing volume license for those packages. So these are the services that they do provide. For council's information, this is a new year that they are requesting, we are requesting that they provide service. And again, listed And, um, again, listed on packet page, uh, 232, or a list of all the services that they would be providing us. This is for a one-year contract at a cost of eighty thousand dollars. Last year's cost was sixty-five. So this is a fifteen thousand dollar increase. When we first got into this lease agreement, it was, um, basically to provide us a service and develop a, a partnership. Um, and they've carried us, um, and what they're trying to do is get closer to the, um, costs, I guess, that they provide us. And basically what they, um, uh, do provide for us is database administration, network engineering, and desktop support. Prior to us meeting with the city of Loma Linda, we did have an MIS specialist. But hi- his level was not to the extent that they have, that they provide us. So we get, you know, all the high level and the low level all mixed up in one. And as you can see by the contract, they've also provided, um, response times for any, um, issues that may arise. And that's on packet page 239 of your, uh, agenda packet. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you so much for the report. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you. Eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Do we look into other areas where we could find the same type of, uh, service for cheaper cost? So I understand the backup server and everything else, and then he gives his hand out on wires sticking out of walls. I thought that's what they took care of before. I mean, that's, hasn't been taken care of. I mean, because we've been paying them, what, two years now? For this service?
Yes, we've been actually three. This will be the fourth year.
So I'm just wondering why we're getting pictures of wires on the walls and stuff. They haven't taken care of that when they were installing new equipment?
Um, we were ju- I, I just put in the pictures for show.
I, I know, Miss Fortune. I was just wondering, because, you know, we're trying to justify how eighty thousand dollars is, and that's this year, and if they go up another fifteen thousand next year, we're gonna be, you know, it, it depends, you know. We're just gonna keep going up, and I think there's cheaper ways out there that we could utilize on this. Even, you know, we had our own backup service. I mean, you get terabytes on thumb drives now for backup. I'm just wondering, I go, you know, are we buying any computers for this? We're just doing it for a service web base if our printer goes out, you know? I know there's other contracts out there, and I don't know how much licensing's are. I mean, have we looked into all this?
Go out for bid on this?
I suggest that we should. That's why I'm asking a question. I'm, I'm trying to justify how we got eighty thousand dollars on this. That's my question.
City, Mr. City Manager?
Councilmember, see, there are a couple of things that, um, that, that, uh, we certainly agree with what you're saying in terms of, uh, we received notice very late about the increase. Uh, that's why I just come into you now. Uh, certainly, one of the things that Loma Linda is doing is they're getting ready to contract out all of their services. And so we're gonna need to actually look at, look at something, partner with someone else, look at someone local, the, the school district, even the private sector to try and find out. Um, but for this late in the date, for this particular year, I think we're gonna need to move forward with this, um, uh, with, with this for this year. But certainly, you're, you're, I think you're right on point that we need to look at, uh, services. They were going to actually, uh, terminate our contract last year, and then we ended up paying them the full rate. Initially, we were getting a discounted rate. We ended up getting the full cost rate. Um, but, you know, I, to your comment, most people don't really understand our, what happens with us. They're giving us a full rate. Now, obviously, if we're paying for a full person, we're not getting the, the total full person, because we don't have that ma- that many needs. We have very few tickets. What they've done is they've upgraded things, you know. Cynthia's PowerPoint goes from unstructured to structured, so we have, we have less downtime. Um, so it's like the dog, like the dog catcher. You know, we, we, we're charged for X number of dogs for the dog catcher, but we really don't have many dogs going to the dog catcher. So there's a lot of, uh, a lot of play in there that people don't realize when, when they have us as a client. We're not a very needy client. And so one of the things we'll do, when we shop this offer this year, we'll, we'll try and hone in on that to try and get the, the best deal possible.
Is there an opportunity to do that? And, and cut this short?
It's a year's contract, and I would, I would imagine that if we talk with the, if we come up with a better option, if we talk with the city manager and Loma Linda, I think they'd be willing to work with us on that.
Any other questions, staff? I'll open it up for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? All right, hearing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a, of a motion. I am interested to know when they're going out for their services to be provided. Is that happening this year?
It, it's supposed to happen this year. You know, they have, uh, they've got a, a cable company that they were operating internally, and they're turning all that over to a private company. So I can, we, we'll get that back to you.
Is there any way we could do a month to month then, since they're gonna go with somebody else?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I didn't hear you.
Is there any way we could go month to month and, and go out for bid on this, since they're, they're changing the way that they provide their own services?
Certainly, there's no harm in asking, and I can go back and ask, um, yeah, the city of Loma Linda, and if you'd like to delay this two weeks, we can come back.
You know, Mayor, may I suggest, um, that what... My con- my concern is initially, they didn't want to offer the services anymore. Uh, I'm, because it's a, it's a year's service for a, for, for help. I'm certain that we'll be able to get out of this. But one of the things we probably should do is, is if we can, during this timeframe, get some quotes on whatever costs of others, and we can really compare to see if this really is a, 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 a very large, uh, charge for us.
And are we able to, to push back to the next meeting?
Sure, we can, we can do that.
All right, is that what my colleagues would like to do? All right, please come to, come back to us with, with more information. All right, we'll move to item 11, which is the award of the June 2017 Community Benefits Fund. May we have a staff report, please?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, Cynthia Fortune again for the city manager's office. Before you are two applications for the Community Benefits Fund. This staff report supports the following city council goals. Goal number one, to ensure fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements. And goal number four, where we develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaborations with community groups, youth groups, and senior organizations. So as shown in the background, uh, for the past couple of years, um, we've always had an approved annual budget of grants of twenty-five thousand. We've shown the amount that we've spent for each of the year, and we've had unused balance in both years. Now, at the time, um, on the June 27, 2017 discussion, um, we again requested a twenty-five thousand allocation. Uh, and but for 1718, what we had requested was to set aside five thousand for Light Up Grand Terrace, and, uh, that the city manager stated that ten thousand from the Community Benefit Fund be used for the, uh, city's fortieth birthday. But if we did that, uh, all that would be left, uh, would be a small amount for, uh, what it was originally intended for. So the way the staff, uh, report is, um, written, uh, the city staff will seek council approval to request rollover for the city birthday. As, as you can see, we have a prior unused balance of thirteen, three ninety-nine. So when we close sixteen, seventeen, if we have a surplus, um, of thirteen, three ninety-nine or over, we were gonna request to rollover that to be used for city birthday activities. So what I'd like to do is go through the two grant applications. We got one from the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library, and one from the Grand Terrace Little League. Also shown here is, uh, under the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library, they have requested three and have received three, um, grant funds. One in November of 2015, one in May of 2016, and one in June. And we also listed what, uh, they were using these programs for. So this fourth one now they're requesting, uh, to provide materials, um, so that they can, um, display the various materials in the library itself. So they're looking to, uh, purchase library carts to display, uh, pertinent material for the library, and purchase some DVDs. Um, and they believe that doing this will bring more patrons to the library. And again, the amount they're requesting is two thousand dollars. Now, from the Grand Terrace Little League, um, they are requesting to help offset the cost incurred to run the league for uniform costs, socks, hats, picture packets. Again, same, the, the Little League in January of 2016 requested two thousand dollars and was approved that to help provide equipment and, uh, supplies for their snack bar. So those are the two, uh, Community Benefit Grant applications that the city has received. Uh, we are requesting that city council approve that. And, um, we are also going to make sure that, um, we, uh, remind all the leagues that once their grant application is approved, that, uh, they follow the four steps that we have written on page 244. They issue the city of Grand Terrace an invoice for the grant amount. They ensure that the city is mentioned, or our logo is included, we're included as a sponsor in any material that advertises the activity or event. They complete a W-09 if they have not done so, and they submit the receipts within thirty days of the event or activity. So based on the request earlier where we're just going to use prior unused balance for the city's birthday, if you look at the fiscal impact, um, if this is approved for the four thousand under the youth programs, and we set aside five thousand for Light Up Grand Terrace, we're gonna have a balance of sixteen thousand for the remainder of the year for future, uh, Community Benefit Grant applications. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Mayor?
Councilmember Reinars?
The Assistant City Attorney has recommended that I recuse myself from this vote as I have a family member who's a volunteer for one of these organizations.
Okay. All right, any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I will close it and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of two thousand dollars for the city Community Benefit Fund to the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library for DVDs and displays and library materials, and also approve the award of two thousand dollars from the city Community Benefit Fund to the Grand Terrace Little League to offset uniforms and other material costs and fees.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Wilson and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes, Councilmember Reinars abstains.
Welcome back, Councilmember Reinars. We will move to item number 12, which is the interim childcare services agreement with Family Services Association.
One more time, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Cynthia Fortune for the city manager's office. Before you tonight is an interim childcare services agreement with Family Services Association. What we're requesting is that, uh, well, thirty, uh, on May 30th, city council approved a lease agreement with Family Services Association for childcare services, and the conclusion of city-provided child, child, of the city-provided childcare program. During that transfer, we couldn't make July 1st, so we requested an interim thirty-day agreement, which was approved. And unfortunately, in spite of that, we've done a lot of, um, maintenance and repair to the childcare, uh, facility. Uh, they've already, uh, as, as lo- I, I found out either this morning that they've actually received their fire inspection and got that approved. Now they're going to go forward with the actual licensing inspection. Those are the two main inspections that are missing. And again, we, we, we believe this will be completed by August 30th, so we are requesting a thirty-day extension to the interim agreement. What we'd like to remind city council is that this agreement is only for the childcare center. The after-school programs, um, will end on July 31st. That, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no, oh, Councilmember Hussey?
Can you give me the reason why the after-care, what's the main issue was gonna end with the childcare?
Sure, I can, or...
There's a good manager?
Certainly. Um, Councilmember Hussey, uh, and councilmembers, the, the city has an agreement with the joint, Colton Joint and Front School District to use those off-site facilities. The agreement's with the city, and the city did not pay anything for, for monthly rent. Uh, FSA, I introduced FSA to the, the Colton Joint and Front School District. They met with the superintendent, uh, and they were informed that the school district was not interested in giving them the same rate that we were. And they were gonna charge them, um, four hundred dollars per day, per site. Uh, and that's a considerable amount of money. And so I, I do know that FSA director will be appearing before the, uh, district's meeting on the 27 to request, uh, that, uh, that they not try to charge them four hundred dollars per site per day. So, um, but he was told by the superintendent that the district has a policy, and they're, they're not interested at this point in time in changing that policy. So what we did was we were, we were able to extend our agreement with them until July 31st. That allowed the program to continue until July. Uh, but they are not interested in extending that beyond that date. I got a call today from the school district informing me of that.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Seeing none, I will open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further discussion.
Um, I'll move the recommendation to extend the interim childcare services agreement with Family Services Association from, this is to August 31st, 2017.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Wilson, Hussey, and Reinars voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Our next item is city manager communications, but he is taking care of those already. So we will go to our recess to close session. We will be meeting in closed session, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to section 54957.6, agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, unrepresented employees, all employees. And, um, the second item will be a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title city manager. For those of you that are not here when we return, thank you so much for being here. And our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 8th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting. And we will be closing in honor of John Franklin Frank Ferre. So we are in recess to close session now. Thank you. 6:00 PM. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days. All right, we will reconvene to open session. The council met in closed session, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Section 54957.6. There are no reportable actions for the agency-designated representative, G. Harold Duffy City Manager, unrepresented employees, all employees. We also discussed public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government, Government Code Section 54957B1, title City Manager, and we gave direction to staff on this item. We will adjourn to our next regular City Council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, August 8th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the City Clerk's Office no later than 14 days preceding the meeting. We are closing tonight in honor of John Franklin Frank Ferrey. And I, I really want to thank my colleagues for our discussions tonight. I think that we had some pretty lively discussion, and, and we were able to really share our differences of, of perspective. But I really believe that we all have the same intention, that we want the best for the city, and, and so it's nice to hear the different perspectives and, and how we want to get there. So I will thank, uh, my councilmembers for that, and thank you to staff for tonight's meeting, and we are adjourned.